Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February 18, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting. Could I have a roll call? Well, first, let me remind everybody that we came into session at 6:30. We immediately left open session and went into executive session, came out of executive session, and now we are opening our regular session at 7:00. Could I have a roll call, please?
All five selectmen are present, as well as Doreen...
Alan England.
And Town Council.
Okay, next would be the Pledge of Allegiance. Gary, can you lead us?
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Announcements, Alan.
We have early voting, February 24th to February 28th at Town Hall if you don't want to avoid the rush later on. Makes it a lot easier.
Jim?
CMW has a subcommittee meeting at 9:00 a.m. on 13 Atlantis Ave in Marion tomorrow.
Okay, Peter? Mary? Okay, I have one. The drop-in center opens tomorrow, is open tomorrow night at 5:00 o'clock. Anybody having problems, alcohol, drugs, any of those kinds of issues, they're there for you. Go ahead in. They're, I'm telling you, they can help you. Trust me. Go in there. It'll be the best thing you ever did for yourself. And further, if anybody is having trouble dealing with somebody who's on drugs, a relative, a friend, whatever, and you don't know how to do with it, you don't know what to do about it, you can go there and they'll find some help for you as well. So tomorrow, 5:00, drop-in center. It's at the Church of the Good Shepherd on High Street. Okay? All right. Next is citizens' comments. Anybody here to speak to us tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Board comments, Alan.
Let's see. Just a couple of quick ones. The Swiss Beach Road, just want to reaffirm to everybody that that particular project is part of the Route 6 corridor study, but it's also been taken up by Mass DOT Region 5 as a separate item that they're working on. I don't know how long it's going to be, but it is, it is sitting on the actual transportation improvement program as of now. So we'll see what happens there. The other thing is the Tahoma Road, Route 28 intersection for a traffic light that originally the fire chief asked through the police chief, see what I could do. It was kind of reported as if the state was going to pay 80%, and the town was going to pay 20%. That particular project, the paperwork went back to everybody, and it said from Pamela Hasner, which is a DOT 5 person in charge of it, that the actual intersection, even though it qualifies for a light, doesn't meet the criteria for an emergency or a high, basically a high-risk area for Mass DOT at this time, since they have the same issues we do with a limited budget. So as far as the state goes right now, they will not be putting any light in. So it's up to the, the way it came back to me was, it's up to the town, and the town should be looking at, basically looking, see if any developer in the area over the last five to 10 years has anything on their conditions or anything that requires a developer when you hit a certain traffic number to do something. We have that with Walmart, we have that with Charlotte-Fernus Road, but I asked Ken Buckland to look at as well. We have nothing in records that show that. So this is going to be a problem for us to do on our own.
Okay. Jim? Peter?
We have a dog hearing coming up tonight, which got me thinking about, you know, whether we should go back and take a look at what we've done in prior dog hearings. In some of these cases, we've issued orders. If the board's happy with it, I'd like to take the lead and work with the animal control officer and try to come up with status updates to see when she's inspected these properties, to see where the compliance is, and so on and so forth. Because it doesn't do us a lot of good to sit up here, and you know, we hear a case, we issue orders, and then we don't know if they're followed up on. So I would, I would just ask for the board's consensus to allow me to go ahead and work with the Director of Natural Resources and the Animal Control Officer to just get a sense of where we are with these things, and then report back to the board.
I think it's a great idea. You volunteered, you're a winner.
Okay, great.
Okay. Huh? All right. Mary, you have anything?
No.
Okay. Next is appointments, reappointments, and interviews. Zoning Board Appeals, Russell Mottl.
All right, we just had one. Is Russell here?
Yeah. Is Russell here?
No.
No, okay.
All right.
We get an okay. I believe we got an okay from the board.
We do.
So...
Huh? You got an okay?
Yeah, it's, it's in the...
I went and dug up, I went and spoke with Ken, and I dug up some old minutes. And...
Nazzy right there.
From the zoning board of appeals, back in October. He hadn't been to any of the meetings yet. They did vote to support him, but one of the recommendations, it's not a requirement, recommendation, is that they attend three meetings. He, I don't know if he's attended any. He's not here tonight.
Well, we have a recommendation from Nazzy, right? From the board.
Right. I have, like I said, I went and looked up the meetings.
Yeah.
Minutes. And...
We'll see what they're...
Forward how you like. I would probably suggest to continue until we can contact him to see if he's interested in coming and talking.
This is follow-up, the application Russell wanted to do, who is interested in serving the zoning board of appeals. We have not received a response to our previous emails that Cassandra sent. Oh, really?
Yeah.
I might be holding off on that.
Yeah.
This is, this is from, this is from an associate's position anyways.
Yeah.
You know, they're trying to put someone in place because one of the ZBA members has given notice.
Yeah, yeah, okay. We'll hold off on it.
Okay.
Okay, license and permits, we have none. The dog hearing is at 7:15. We're going to kind of go by that for now. We're going to go, let's bring Gary down to discuss the vote on smelt. That would be E. on your thing. Hey, Gary?
Hi, good evening. So every year, the board of selectmen has to vote on regulations for the smelt fishery. I did alert the board that due to some construction project that is taking place by the Buzzards Bay Coalition down at Station Street, obviously, the site is inaccessible right now because of the fencing, construction, there's debris everywhere. They have closed it currently to public access. So unfortunately, I think we don't have a choice this year but to not allow access to that area for fishing, which is under the control of the board of selectmen. This is the only act relative to its kind in the state. This is, this is one of the few that allows the fishery to take place during spawning up a river such as this. So the, right now, I was down there today with the state and installed the FIC net, which they utilize to catch the smelt that come up the river and other migratory fish. So that's in, so they're getting ready for the season to start ramping up. So we have, we have a variety of species that they do check that come through there. The actual construction within the waterways has stopped per orders of the Division Marine Fisheries because of the fish passage. So as of Friday, they're done with all of the waterways workings right now, so the river is open. It's, this is the first time the river's actually had free passage in almost 200 years. So in looking in this for this year, the state has asked me on numerous occasions, Mr. Brad Chase, he's the, in charge of the migratory fish program for Division Marine Fisheries, and he is in complete support of this because of the amount of time and effort he's put into studying the smelt passage that we really, it's, it's, it's time to start looking at this fishery. And the only person that has control of this fishery is the board of selectmen, so we just were bringing it before you to take a look at. He unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. He is tied up on other meetings, but he's willing to come in and actually bring all of his statistics with him and everything that he's documented under the last 16 years of him. I mean, he's really the master of this waterway on species coming in. Last few years, he's caught maybe 10 fish. He's done a lot of searching for eggs before the dam was out, where they usually lay in that stream section where the grass is and the riprap and the old ore that's in the waterways. That's where they usually settle their eggs, and he hasn't found much of anything. Your average fish will lay 30,000 eggs, and upwards more as they return every year. As they get more mature, they'll lay more eggs as well, and he's not finding much of anything. So I just...
So what do you want us to do, Gary?
I think it's, you know, I'd like to see the, we have to act on it this year, and I'm, I'm open to your entertainment of having Mr. Chase come in and actually give you a presentation, so you have some more backing on it, but he's willing to...
I think we can trust you.
Yeah.
But what do you want us to do?
Well, I think we have to go for an indefinite, and it's just as a recommendation, indefinite postponement of, of this type of fishing at this site. You know, I think we're just in a time of, you know, when you're looking at fisheries, you know, you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. You know, if you don't regulate it, you know, it goes wild. If you do regulate it, you're the bad guy also. It just, I, I think we're in a time of where we're stuck with facing some realities that, you know, fisheries are, are hurting. I mean, we look at with the oysters, we look at with everything that we, we have to, you know, it was always look at the fisheries, look at the fisheries, and look at the fisheries. I mean, my grandfather in the 60s used to go there and catch his smelt. I mean, it's just that it was a tradition, you know, and I, and it hurts to see so many people, so just Charlie Maxim, which I referenced, and, you know, my, my request on this, it just, you know, these guys have been there for generations doing this fishery, and it's a family thing, and it's handed down, and it's, it's, but I hate to be on this point and sticking this on us and everybody that we have to make a decision such as this.
I'm not a real big fan of indefinite stuff. I wouldn't mind doing it for, for my personal. I'd say maybe three years, and then we'll check it again in three years.
Sure, absolutely.
See what it looks like. But indefinite, I'm really not a big fan of indefinite.
And indefinite can be reviewed, can, can be, can be re-entertained.
But if we do it every three years, it's going to come up automatically.
Yep.
If we do it indefinitely, you tend to forget it, and then, you know, maybe you never get back to it.
Absolutely.
You know, that's all I'm saying.
One of the big things that Mr. Chase was stressing is the fact that where this waterway is now open, this is giving them a whole new opportunity to invest more time in studying the fisheries and, and seeing the passage, because you're not looking at the fishery being that location anymore. You're, you're looking at an area now that is now open to passage completely. So the chances of the fish still going to that location might be there, but at the end of the day, they may be passing through and going up rivermore. So I mean, we have, we may have completely changed the whole outlook of how this fishery is going to be handled, and you may not have that collection. You know, it's nighttime, you know, your fishing is so limited anyway. You've got to look at your incoming tides, you've got to look at your nighttime fishing, because that's when they spawn. My friend's story is, you know, when they would catch the egg-bearing fish, they would squeeze the fish and, and push the eggs, but that wasn't natural, so your, your eggs aren't setting in those locations. They're, you know, when they, they're coming up to spawn, they have a method, and it's, it's not our method. So...
Anybody else have questions? Go ahead, Alan.
Is this the Hushoo Dam that we're talking?
Yes.
Okay. That opens up the area. I'd rather go for one year and come back simply because we're talking about other things along that riverway as well. And a year from now, we could have a whole different situation that we have to monitor, so...
There we are.
I'd like to go ahead and do it for a year and then come back again.
I completely, I agree completely, and I think with the offer of Mr. Chase coming in, I think it's really important to hear what he has to say. He's, he really is a...
Well, Alan's right. We may be changing that area pretty, pretty significantly.
Yep.
Coming up, so...
Well, they, I mean, you're, you're talking, you know, $700,000-plus project going on in there. That's a serious, serious undertaking with, you know, hopefully, a lot of proactive movement towards the rebuilding of quite a few species for the fisheries.
Anybody else have questions?
No, just, just an update. I used to be one of the Marine Fisheries Commissioners for the state of Massachusetts for quite a while, so I'm still on there mailing us, et cetera. I know Mr. Chase very well, and I do get constant updates what's going on, so I am familiar with the issue.
Okay, so does anybody else have anything to say?
This is, that's a depleted fishery. And, you know, people go down there at night, you won't get a meal out of it.
No, no, unfortunately not.
If anything...
A little fish anyway. Not much to smelt anyway.
With the work that the Coalition's doing, they're going to extend the riprap up above the dam, so it'll provide more breeding area, and as Gary said, they might even go up further up, upriver. I would say a year's fine. You know, three year would probably be a minimum, and five to really see and to let the smelt, if they can, reestablish their, that is a, you know, viable breeding, and not, not a depleted fishery.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think a year moratorium is good. It's also more legally sustainable. Should anybody challenge it if you put a, if it has to be renewed rather than if you just put it up as an indefinite moratorium, so...
Mary?
One year, you're good with one year?
One year, whatever you want. We can definitely redress it, and like I said, I'd love to bring some more information to you. He just wasn't available tonight, so...
Okay. All right, can I have a motion from somebody? Motion made by Alan for a year. Do I hear a second, second from Peter? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. You got it.
Thank you very much.
Okay? And we'll, we'll deal with it again next, next year.
Yep, absolutely. Would you like me to stay for the articles? I know you're...
For your articles, sure, yay.
I'm, I'm...
I mean, you're, you're pretty much boilerplate stuff anyway.
Yeah, it's nothing, it's just some, you know, we have some interest payments and...
Yeah, yeah. Do you have any questions on any of that?
As a matter of fact, I...
We can do them right now if you want.
No, I can wait, I can...
No, we can pull them out right now, get it out of the way.
Well, we got the dog here.
Well, we don't have to, we can't start before 7:15. We can start after, so...
Yeah, we're going to hold on.
Can we pay $4,000 dockage fee for a boat?
Right now, because we have to keep it at the marina. So we ended up, we, we've been going for a few years through a settlement between DEP, where we were actually not charged for dockage for quite a few years, and that was through a settlement of a previous owner of the marina, but the current owner has to pay the fines through the, through the process. And DEP would rather have in-kind services turned back to the town as opposed to going into a cash fine. So they, they made the agreement with the town to be allowed to utilize dockage for four years in lieu of payment of their, the fine. But that has now ended, so we still have to pay, just like the fire department pays, we have, anybody that's in the marina...
Right, so, but why do we need to use their facilities?
I don't have another facility to utilize that's secure. I mean, we, we look at cameras, we're looking at access, we got parking. I can't leave it at Bessie Park, I can't leave it at Tempest Knob. Not that I don't trust the areas, but we have a lot of areas, we have some concerns.
Once a pier, we can't leave it there.
I, well, we, we have two boats. We have one in onset, we have one in Wareham. So we, we utilize two, two main patrol boats. So that one is, that one's stationed out of the Wareham River.
So that's Was Murray?
Yes, correct.
In the Wareham River?
Yep, yep.
The response time's out of onset to the rest of the town would be too much, so that's why he's got two.
Yeah, we just, yeah.
I understand that, but...
No, if I had a, well, if we had a facility, I definitely, you know, we, you know, obviously we entertain it, but right now, this is just...
We'll build you a marina.
I'm sorry? Dockage is a lot cheaper, for sure. I'm kidding.
We don't have dockage and whatnot, and I understand the point about security. It just brings to question why we're spending $4,000 a year on that.
It's the footage, that's what, you know, we have, our marinas are running 150 to 190-some odd dollars a foot right now, unfortunately.
Can't keep it anyplace else.
Nothing else. You know, I don't have any, I don't, we don't have private docks, we don't have anything, and we've utilized this location because it's, it's centralized and, and it's just part of it. Unfortunately, this is the only place that we have to pay dockage for. So we utilize the pier with our other boats, we have boats out of moorings, and so this is the only dockage expense that we are contending with, is, is this one, so...
Any other questions about this, about his, his articles? Everybody knows what they are. Okay, you're all set, Gary.
Okay. You guys have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right, so let's, let's bring Ken up. We're going to get to the dog hearing, it's going to just hang in there a little bit, okay? Come on up, Ken.
Thank you.
So what do we have with you? We have several issues, right? One is you're part of the proposed authorization that town administrated and negotiate that host agreement.
Correct.
We're all set with that now? I mean, you've, you've looked this over, or what's the deal?
Well, what we want to do is our standard host community agreement with another business going into the, the old Cranberry complex.
Okay. All right. So does anybody have any questions of him about, about that particular entity or anything?
Just the terms, the usual standard terms.
Standard terms, yeah.
Three and three, or just straight three?
It's just a straight three, because it's not a retail operation.
I understand. Thank you.
Okay.
Is that, is that like within the entire complex, or is that a separate building, freestanding building?
It's within the complex itself. Renovated space.
That will be renovated for that purpose?
Correct.
They will have to meet all the state's security requirements and everything else.
Does anybody here from that organization?
Yeah.
Why don't you come, why don't you join us? Come on down and kind of give us a little bit of what you have to...
Michelle?
Steve.
Thank you for the help.
Go ahead.
May I ask the question?
Yeah, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, do you want to run us through this?
Sure.
Kind of, as quick as possible.
Yep, you've got it. So my name is Michelle Hansen. I am a partner, in addition to Steve Saper, in a company seeking a manufacturing license at 3065 Cranberry Highway. We are looking to get a cannabis manufact, cannabis extraction and processing license through the town. We'll extract and manufacture a variety of marijuana-infused products. This will be closed to the public. It is not a retail site, as stated previously. We will sell directly to other manufacturers and direct to the retail market. We're an experienced team of professionals with a diverse set of skills and resources that we feel will help us to successfully operate the facility. We have a combined...
You might want to pull that mic a little closer.
Sorry, I'm a little low talker.
You talk quietly, so...
I am a low talker, sorry. The team's combined skills include over 60 years of business development experience, leadership, manufacturing, and operations. We are committed to a professional and responsible implementation of this new business in Wareham. I, my background is, I'm a senior business development consultant, I'm a certified business analyst. I've spent about 30 years in the corporate sector, developing business strategy, risk management, and developing compliance programs. And I have 30 years of experience running operations in heavily regulated industries. I'm going to turn it over to my, my partner, Steve, and he can introduce himself.
Very brief. I apologize for the informal headshot on the deck, but I'm pretty proud of that fish.
Yes, you are.
And it was released, for the gentleman that was concerned about the fishery, it was released. So my name is Steve Saper, I'm a co-owner in Yukon Bico LLC. I'm an Army veteran, chem-nuke weapons expert for the Army Corps of Engineers, also a former finance pro with business development, technology, and operations experience, about 30 years in the, the public sector there. The only reason why we wanted to let you know who we were is so you knew who was asking to come to your town and conduct business with you. But we have the, the skill, experience, and resources to begin, complete, and execute on the project we're proposing. The rest of the deck, I know you guys want to move this along, is really just a restatement of what I imagine you already know, the HCA process. So we are here to ask you all to consider our request for a host community agreement in your town. And I believe you have the business plan documents with some high-level financials already in, in your possession. Do you have those, folks?
Yeah, they're, they're in the thing. I believe they're, they're in the file, right?
There's, there's one here if you need as well.
There's one there, I think there's one, oh, there's one here too, yeah. There's one in the folder too, I think.
No.
No, it's not in there?
We didn't get those.
No, okay. We certainly get those to you.
Yep, we'll get them to you.
No, I actually, there's an attachment in here, but it's, they're not, they weren't printed off.
Four attachments didn't get in there, okay. There's supposed to be four attachments, are they on the, on the, in the packet? No?
I don't recall seeing them.
There's a link, I think, to, I think you're right, I think it's a link, right?
Yeah, there should be a link.
To the attachments?
I didn't get it though.
I can't. In, in our packet?
Yes.
I can't click on it.
Oh, you've got a photocopy of it, so...
Okay.
Maybe Ken could get those to us.
He's got it right there.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's...
Send electronic version.
Yeah.
We just have to authorize, all we're going to do is authorize us to negotiate the contract, the, the thing anyway.
That's correct.
And that's all we really, they need from us right now is to allow them to start the negotiations in order to come up with an agreement. So that's all they're asking for right this minute.
All right, I move...
Question?
Go ahead, Alan.
On the host agreement, we have the impact fee as part of the host agreement?
Correct.
It's listed in here.
I know. But that says for a max of 3%?
Correct.
When we have the impact fee, we have to provide stuff in order to prove that to the state down the line.
That's correct.
So it may not be 3%.
They look for the impact to the town, and I'm sure we can justify that with the, the impact to our, our community.
That's on you, then.
Need an intern to help me out.
We think it'll be much lower. No. I tried.
That'd be half as much higher.
I'm sure.
Anybody else got a question?
Nope.
All right, so could I have a motion to authorize them to enter into negotiations for an agreement?
Second.
With Yukon B Company LLC? Motion made by Alan, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. There you go.
Thank you.
All right? All right, next up.
What's left for the state?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for the help, sir.
I'm sure we will.
Thank you very much.
All right, we got the Community Rating System presentation.
You want to do that now?
Yes, I do.
All right, I...
I want to try to get you out of the way. That's what I'm trying to do.
Try to get rid of me, Alan.
Yes. Mostly because I know you've been here all day as well.
Kansas, just to hand out, are you doing that? Okay. Oh, yeah, we already have those, right?
It's just gonna...
Okay. That's all. Sierras, can't remember. That's the same thing. Thank you. We're good. I read it, too.
Mm.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Pretty noisy over there, aren't you?
I know.
You did what?
I'll, I'll go...
We've got this.
You've got this. Come on, you can do this.
I'll go without slides.
You can do it. Go for it.
The Federal Emergency Management Agency, which everybody knows about, federal government, has a National Flood Insurance Program, which has the firm maps, the flood insurance rate maps, and the, the National Flood Insurance that's available to homeowners in, in the communities of the US. In the case of the flood insurance rates that are affected, that are controlled by the flood insur-- the National Flood Insurance Program, there's a, a program called the Community Rating System that allows the town, if it shows proof of its active attempt to manage and protect people in the floodplain, that you can get a discount available to homeowners with this community rating system. It's an application that's made to the state. There's a point system from, within nineteen categories of, of activities that support the, the application. And typically, there, there are ten, ten classifications, ten rankings of communities, and there's different percentages of, of insurance discount that's available. Most communities, and I'd say eighty percent of the ones that apply, get a ten percent or fifteen percent discount that's available to homeowners within these, the, the special flood hazard areas. Those, those zone, what's called the Zone A or the Zone V, the wave action zone, or the, the stillwater flooding, that, that affects so many homeowners in a coastal environment like we have. It, the, the point system requires that we have at, at least an elevation certification, that is, every building that gets built within the town, get a, an elevation cer-- certification by an engineer and surveyor that says where that, that building lies in relationship to the floodplain that, that surrounds it. So, it's information that we have to store and to have available, and I think it can be done quite easily through the building department. The other is to have a, a flood management plan in place. Something that we're doing right now with the, with the Municipal Vulnerability Program of the state and the multi-hazard mitigation plan that we're preparing. We're looking specifically at the floodplain impacts and what the opportunities are to, to protect, assess the potential problem and to, to mitigate it in some way so that we reduce the cost to the town and to the townspeople about, about the recovery from the flood event. You can, the, the top category, the number-one category, is a forty-five percent reduction in, in flood insurance rates. But I only know of one town in, in the United States, in the last I looked, that had that, that re-- top rating, because I'm, I'm assuming that they are a town on top of a mountain with very little floodplain involved. It's, it's not easy to get through the, the program, but what I'm suggesting is that the, you sponsor the, the action to go ahead and, and to develop this plan in the Community Rating System. And let's see how far we can get in terms of, again, the, the program rating that can give a reduction of insurance to the homeowners in town.
Well, I mean, certainly, we are probably more susceptible to these, this type of insurance than probably most towns, so anything we can save our ratepayers is huge.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, I'm all in favor of doing whatever it takes to, to get any kind of discounts, especially the way that they went when they raised all these things up. I mean, this is, you know, gotten out of hand for some people.
Ten percent isn't a lot, but the investment of time into it is going to help the, the town.
Well, if you're paying eighteen thousand dollars, ten percent's a few bucks.
More than a few, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and if you're in one of those velocity zones, you know, you're paying big money.
So, this is a way we can, we can save the homeowners. We do the work upfront, and the homeowners get the benefit of, I guess, insurance.
What do you need from us exactly? What do you want us to do?
Vote to authorize them.
Vote to authorize you to, to pursue it?
Exactly.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Peter, seconded by Mary. Any discussion? Well, go ahead, Alan.
Quick comment. We need to thank the State of California, Maxine Waters. I'm sorry. We need to...
Thanks, the State of California and Maxine Waters for this whole feeless mess that we're dealing with.
Well, I'd also like to thank whoever and Noah is in charge of this, because apparently they think we're next door to Florida.
It's only eighteen hundred miles.
It's only a few miles. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. There you go.
Thank you very much.
So, what else do you have for me tonight, with me tonight?
The performance bond I wanted to have approved for the Sower Farm. This is a decommissioning bond for the...
You just need a vote to...
Release the bond?
To release the bond?
No, to accept the bond.
Accept it, that's right. We're going to release it before we accept it.
Yeah, I was going to say, huh?
Name of the bond company?
All right.
I don't have the bond with me.
Argott Insurance Company.
Yeah.
He's got money bags in his car for you, Alan.
How much is the bond?
Not yet.
It should say...
One million eight hundred ninety-nine thousand thirty-three dollars.
And what's the property reference here?
The only thing I want to try to make while, while you're here is, one of the things that's been going on over the years, and to know not your fault by any stretch of the imaginations, is the planning board's been releasing some bonds, and they have never gotten our vote to release them. And they cannot release a bond. All they can do is say, "Yeah, it's okay," and then we have to release the money. But we have seen money that's been turned back without any vote of this board. So, I wish you would keep an eye on that in the future, if you don't mind.
Will do.
Okay? All right. Move to, to accept the bond.
Alan's got a question.
Alan, go ahead, Alan.
What I'd also like to see is, when we have bonds and stuff, a lot of times, people put a bond out, and then they'll farm it out to three or four companies like they do with house mortgages. I think we need to be notified to make sure it's accepted when they do that. It's a very common practice.
Okay.
You may end up with a company like in Idaho or something, things like that.
Okay. Motion, please?
A move that we approve the release of this...
Accept.
Accept.
Accept the bond.
We're releasing it already. You move acceptance of the bond. Second?
Second.
By Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. So, that's it for you tonight, right?
Yes, thank you very much.
Awesome. Three, three, we got you out of here in one night.
Perfect.
How do you like that, Ammapples? All right, next up.
We got the dog hearing.
Next up, we go to the dog hearing.
Yeah, we got that now, right?
You know, how about, can I get the coalition out of here first?
Well, they're going to be doing a long report.
How long is your report, the coalition's report?
Five to ten minutes.
Five to ten minutes? Are the dog people okay with that? Another five or ten minutes? Everybody's shaking their head, so I'm going to go with that. As long as you're shaking your head. My chair just deflated. Look at me.
You've lost hydraulics.
I've lost hydraulics, and I just changed chairs. I'm getting too heavy, apparently. You don't say it. Don't say a word. Don't say it. I know what you're thinking.
That's who told you to say that.
Now we can discuss stuff.
Short stuff over here.
All of a sudden, I've deflated. I could be, I'm, I feel like I'm on my knees.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't even know if I can get this back up or not.
Which is that chair on you?
I just moved the chair in the back.
Which...
What the hell? What's this thing?
Somebody's charger for their computer.
Who's got a charger in?
I don't know.
It's all around the chair.
No kidding. It's not going to be charging anything at this rate.
It's just going to come this way.
Wow.
Anybody want an Apple charger?
All right, it's back up. Let's see what happens.
Yeah, it's for a MacBook or something.
Let's see how long it lasts.
Oof. You're hanging in there for now.
Should go down slow. Go easy, Tiger. Go easy, Tiny. Is that what you were going to say? Look at, hey. I'm going down. No. It doesn't matter. I'll just stay on my knee.
Here, if you sit there, we won't even see the top of your head.
You'll be under the table. Does, no, um...
Ken's out in the hall still.
Ken, is Ken still out in the hall?
It's Ken.
Ken! Kenny, do you know how to make this projector system work here?
Ken can do it.
It is on.
It's on, but it's not... Oh, there you go. A little plug-in might help, right?
Plugging in might help.
Look at that, huh?
My work here is done.
Good job, Ken.
All right.
I don't know that we have the...
I don't think you have a port for that.
Right port. Hold on. So, this is like a test, right?
Yeah, it's a test.
Yeah, we do this to everyone. Hide the important cords.
Yeah, exactly. Make you fight for your presentation.
See, Ken said his work was done, but it isn't.
Ken?
You got to pick a computer or some, HDMI, yeah, there you go. Oh, look at that.
Thanks, Ken.
She's got it.
Just stand there. It only behaves when you're in the room.
There you go. All right.
Nice.
All right, let's go for it.
You got it.
I'm giving you seven minutes.
Yep.
Go for it.
Making me work for it here tonight. Thank you very much. My name is Catherine Garafoli. I'm the director of the Onset Bay Center with the Buzzards Bay Coalition. Couple of weeks ago, I came, and before you, talking about our sub-lease to Nemasket Kayak Center and requested a, some time to get in front of you to give you an update about the exciting progress we're making at the Onset Bath House. I have Tom Tucker here. He is our program manager. He's helping with the development of the programs going to be bringing to the community this year. So, again, I just want to thank you. So, the last time that I was here, we were talking about different plans, but I have some exciting news. So, the building itself at 186 Onset Ave is about eighty-five percent complete. We're anticipating opening by mid-June. We basically have to, because we're getting ready to launch the registration for our program soon. So, in this given year alone, we're hoping to engage eight hundred and fifty people at the Onset Bath House. That's six hundred and seventy-two children and about a hundred and sixty-eight adults. And those are very modest estimates. We're really anticipating a lot of interest in the facility. We're bringing a lot of new programs that will engage the community and just finding different ways to get people to use the facility itself. We're going to be offering a whole slew of programs that don't just strictly range for youth, but also for adults, and it will have a lasting benefit on the actual residents and visitors to Wareham. We're going to be using a lot of our partnerships that we've already cultivated, specifically with Gary the Harbor Master, with the YMCA in Wareham. We're going to be working with the Department of Marine Fisheries to help host Learn to Fish clinics and things like that. So, we've already made some really great connections throughout the region to help us with putting on programs that people will really want to participate in. Some other things that we're working towards is obviously trying to figure out how best to suit the needs of the youth here in Wareham. So, one of the main components of the programs we're developing is the youth programs in the summer. And as you remember, last year, we hosted a small subset of sailing and marine ecology programs out of Burgess Point, and that was very successful. We had a great partnership with the Wareham Public School System, along with the Boys and Girls Club, and we anticipate having that continue. One of the premier programs we're going to be hosting is a full-day program offered in one-week sessions that'll start June 29th and run all the way to August 14th. That's seven weeks, so we're nearly doubling what we offered last year. We're going to have open enrollment, but we're also going to have a lot of scholarship availability for, that'll be prioritized to the residents of Wareham. We're going to continue that partnership, as I said. We've had a successful relationship with the care program in that we continue to receive Department of Ed money that helps fund staff, supplies, and different training opportunities to keep our curriculum fresh. And then, that actual program itself will focus on integrating all the different parts of what we're hoping to host. It'll have a sailing component. It will have marine exploration. It will have the swimming component. We'll have paddling. So, it'll be a full-day adventure for the kids that participate, and making it exciting to be outside and to actually experience the new facility itself, which is something that they haven't had before on Onset Beach. We're also going to host a number of half-day programs that are more specialized. We're talking about a Learn to Sail, a Beginner Sail Program. We're talking about a Beginner Sail Program for high school-age students that will be separate to encourage them to attend, that'll be geared towards the older ages. We're going to have intermediate sailing for those who have had some minimal sailing experience and are looking for a little bit further instruction. And then a paddling adventure that'll focus on learning to kayak and learning to paddleboard. So, as you can see, we're going to be engaging in a lot of different activities that will get the kids outside. But again, all of this costs money, right? And we're really excited for the fact that we have the ability to provide scholarships to a lot of children this year. We're talking about scholarships to between two hundred and forty-seven and three hundred and twenty-eight youth, and that can vary. We're talking, if they fall into a certain bracket, we're talking about a hundred percent reduction to a different bracket that's seventy-five, seventy-five percent discount on the program cost, which makes it really reasonable. At the same time, though, the actual programs themselves will be very reasonable for, for a family that's outside of that range. So, the scholarships are going to be prioritized for the residents of Wareham and the Village of Buzzards Bay. And then, secondary, if they are still available, we're going to have them available to people outside of Wareham that are in the general Buzzards Bay watershed area and prioritize them that way. So, we're, we're looking to really provide a lot through our partnerships, as well as through this scholarship program that the coalition has been able to create. Besides the regular structured programs, we're going to hold morning programs that'll, that hopefully will incorporate yoga on the beach, that will get people out to Wicket's Island, learn to shellfish, along with a number of one-off events that will be geared towards families to get them out with us on the weekends if they're visiting in town. You know, a couple of hours, a couple times a month, with specialized programs that get them excited for learning about our Onset Bay. And then, as I mentioned earlier, our partnership with the Wareham Care Program, we're looking into a sixteen-week after-school program where we would engage kids interested in our facility and our mission and get them over to the site and have them working on potential boat building, navigation, marine ecology, just getting them out of the classroom with some hands-on learning experiences. So, we're pretty excited about what we're building here with the hopes that this center will be a hub for everybody. And it's not just geared towards youth. We're wanting to attract a lot of adults through a number of different sessions. Recently, we became members of the US Sailing Association, where we've been registered as an Adult First Sail Center. That means that we are going to be hosting events for people that do not have any sailing experience, for them to come and test it out with us, with an instructor, to get on it on the water and pique their interest in how much fun sailing can be. We're going to host a Tuesday racing series for people who do have experience, and then our regular guided tours with Nemasket Kayak Center through our Full Moon Kayaks on our regular Wednesday nights. So, we're going to maintain that partnership with them as well. So, there's really something for everybody here at the Onset Bay Center, and that's really what we've been working towards. The coalition has invested three and a half million dollars into making this happen. We're also going to have a lot of presence at some of the good old standby events that are happening in Onset. And as somebody that doesn't live in Wareham and specifically Onset, it's really nice to see the different events that come out of such a small area with such a vibrant Onset Bay Association and the different community leaders that you have there. So, we're planning on being a direct part of all the regular events that are happening in Onset and in greater Wareham, to just have more of a presence and be a good neighbor so that people can feel comfortable coming to us. On top of the fact that I know that there are a lot of people that are very interested in what we're doing at the Onset Bath House, we're going to be holding open houses so people can come and take a tour of the facility and see what we're up to. So, that's basically what we have going on. The exciting news is that our youth program registration will be open on Friday. You'll have to fill out an application form. We'll go through and see if you qualify for scholarships, and then we'll go from there in terms of getting you registered for one of our weekly sessions. But these are the great things that are happening, and when we are ready for our ribbon-cutting to make a formal announcement about a date, I'll make sure everybody has an invitation to join us as we celebrate the opening.
Awesome. Alan, questions? Anybody?
No.
Nope.
Again, you know, what they're going to provide for Wareham, you know, for the residents is something we've never really expected and really appreciate it.
Jim, anything?
Well, it looks like you have a lot of good programming for the kids. And like you say, get them outside, get them interested in being outside. So, thanks.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, the numbers that you recited for the families that could expect to get some sort of financial assistance to be part of these programs is very impressive. You know, one of the things that I think from the beginning probably could have, everybody could have done a little bit better job of was getting the word out that this isn't going to be something exclusive. This is going to be inclusive. This is going to greatly benefit kids who don't know how to swim, don't know how to sail, who don't know how to take advantage of the fact that we live on the water. And it goes beyond just taking advantage and having a nice day out on the boat. The programs they're teaching will save lives because people who don't know how to swim drown.
Thank you.
Okay. Mary? Nope.
Excellent job. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, this is getting more and more exciting now that we're getting closer and closer. So, it's kind of great.
Absolutely. There's still a long way to go, but we're thrilled with how far we've come in the, you know, last two months that we've been working together. And, you know, I have to say that we're very fortunate to have such a great partnership with the town. Your leadership through Derek Sullivan and the Board of Selectmen, we're very thankful for how supportive you've been.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we're going to go to the dog hearing. Everybody's sitting there like, "Oh, yeah, it's about time." All right. We kind of hold these because sometimes they take a little bit of time, and we like to spend as much time as we can to get them done properly. So, can you come, can everybody who's going to be involved in the hearing come down, please? And some of you can take seats here. And I'm going to turn this over to Peter because I let him run the dog hearing, so...
Okay. If you'll have a seat, please.
Okay.
He's a dog lawyer.
More than that, but that's okay. Can we have a roll call vote to motion to open the hearing? Should we make a motion?
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Mary. Roll call, Alan.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Patrick, yes?
Yes.
Peter, yes. We're in, we've got the hearing over.
Okay. I'll read the complaint letter from the Animal Control Officer into the record. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, complaint of vicious or barking dogs under General Laws Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty. I hereby make complaint hereon that the dog owned or harbored by Samiat Finney, nineteen Nicholas Drive, Wareham, Mass. O two five seven one, is dangerous by reason of: The dog described as a one-year-old male blue cane Corso has had three unprovoked bites to humans resulting in injury. December twenty-eighth, twenty-nineteen, to a FedEx driver making a delivery to the address above while the dog was tied outside in the front yard of the dog owner's address. The dog had bitten the driver's hand when he reached out to let the dog smell it. January fourth, twenty-twenty, to a twelve-year-old who was in the house playing with the child who resides there. The dog had bitten her foot resulting in puncture wounds. And January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty, to a woman while exiting her motor vehicle at twenty-three Nicholas Drive. The dog was being walked by the owner's son on a leash when the victim reached her hand out to the approaching dog for him to sniff it. The dog latched onto her right hand resulting in a broken hand with lacerations. This complaint is made under the penalties of perjury. Cheryl Gourviat-Dill, Wareham Animal Control Officer. Would everybody who intends to testify, please raise their right hands and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Samiat Finney.
Do solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. We'll hear now from the Animal Control Officer about this. Are there any other witnesses here to testify in this matter tonight who want to be heard? Okay, seeing none, then this is, it's going to be you three, so...
Yes, and I'd just like to make it known that all three of the victims were notified of the hearing by me personally and directly, so they opted not to attend.
Okay, thank you. Can you describe what your investigation has shown in this?
So, I was not a witness to any of the actual situations. I was made aware of them after the fact. We did have the FedEx driver in December. Then, we had with the girl. One day before the woman. So, we had two that were back-to-back. The girl and the woman were one day apart.
Yes.
Yeah. So, the first one, the dog was on their property. I was not there, so I'm going by what the two different people have told me. I'm just giving their account of it. And the dog was on the property, contained on a leash. We've never had the dog loose. I've never had a complaint of the dog loose. The dog was licensed. The dog was vaccinated. And the FedEx driver was making a delivery to the property. And what the FedEx driver explained to me is he saw the dog. He saw the dog leashed. He approached the dog. He put his hand out, and the dog bit his hand. So, that was situation number one. He did have some lacerations to his hand, but he never sent me a photograph of his injuries, so I don't have any detailed account of what happened at that time. I then received a bite report from, was it a friend of yours?
A friend of my aunt.
Okay. So, there was, there was a girl in the house, and she would, the kids were all playing together, and the dog somehow bit one of the children's feet. The thing I want to keep in mind here is, I don't know if any of you are familiar with this type of dog, but this is a really large dog. It's a very large dog. And if it wanted to seriously injure the child, I feel that it would have. As far as I know, because the mother of that daughter did not send me any photographs, did not give me a statement, so I'm just getting limited information, the injury was a couple puncture wounds, not serious. Now, as far as I understand it, and again, I'm getting all of this third party, a short time later, a day or so later, the third victim, she was a couple doors down. She stated that she was getting out of her car and that, were you the one walking her?
Yes.
Yes. And this young man was walking her. I wasn't there. He was, so it'd probably be better to come from him. But the woman did tell me that the dog was leashed, wasn't off-leash, it was leashed by the young man, and that she approached the dog and she put her hand out to the dog. That injury was serious. The dog bit her hand, and it resulted in broken bones. And I did get photographs of that. So, that's why we're here today because we have a very large dog who could inflict serious injury and has shown to do that. And so, we definitely want to take measures to prevent anybody else from getting injured. And that's why we're here today.
No, we don't have any.
She said she has pictures.
I do have photos of the last victim.
Okay.
And I can submit those. I also, I have a few things for you folks. So, I have the dogs were, the dog was licensed and registered. I have the hospital report on the girl who was bitten, and it has very limited information on her actual injury. There was no photograph. There was no additional information. So, I can't give you a lot of detail on that. I do have the quarantines from the bites that we issued. I'll give you a copy of all this. And then, I have photographs of the third victim. She did send us photographs of that. So, and I have a report from the FedEx driver. I didn't investigate that I actually was away, so the report is not mine, but I can give all of those to you.
While you're passing those out, I guess I would ask the dog's owner, do you agree with the facts as they've been presented by the Animal Control Officer, which is that on three separate occasions, the dog has bit people?
Yes.
Okay. Do you agree with how she's characterized things? In the first instance, the FedEx driver, you know, approached the dog. In the second instance, it was kids. Were they roughhousing or something like that?
Exactly what happened upstairs. I mean, I did call the dog downstairs because I could hear them roughhousing upstairs. And as I'm getting the story from the kids that were upstairs, he was upstairs with them. They were horsing around. I could hear them on the floor. I was telling them to bring the dog downstairs, and the little girl was pulling my, my sister is twelve years old, so that's why she has younger friends playing upstairs. And he was, she was actually shutting the door when my sister was trying to open the door to let the dog out and pulling her hair. So, I think the dog was agitated, and that's what happened. But he, my son does play rough with the dog, and we've tried to correct that behavior. He's been in training. The dog's been in training since he was nine months old. So, when he sees action, he wants to get in. He doesn't, the dog doesn't know his size. She did get bit, and I'm not saying that she didn't get bit at all, but it was like his canine tooth. Like, it wasn't, it was more like a roughhousing type of bite than a malicious, "I'm going to get you" type of bite. I totally agree with the third one was, I mean, he was, we've had a muzzle on him since the first bite. When we go walking, just that time, he didn't have one on. I wasn't home at the time. He's been in training classes. I've done, I'll continue to do everything I need to do. He is, I have an appointment with an actual canine trainer because before this happened, before the third bite even, before, when the first bite happened, I talked to my veterinarian, and I talked to my current trainer that I had. And I had, and he would, they both actually gave me the same canine trainer to train him because of his specialty type of breed. So, I mean, I've been trying to be proactive with everything I can do to the dog. I mean, he is one years old, and I know that he's big, and the dog doesn't know his size. And we've taken different things that we're trying to do differently with the dog. But we love the dog, and I know he's really not a malicious dog. I mean, I have pictures of the kids, like, basically on top of the dog and under the dog. Like, he's, he isn't that type of dog. I know what it looks like here, but he, he just isn't. Like, he was out, and the only reason why he was out by himself on the deck is he just, it was bad timing. I have rocks all on the side of my house for him to go to the bathroom. And that's where he, you know, does his business. And the UPS guy happened to come at the same time. He's not usually out by himself. I don't have a pen for him, which I will get a pen for him. I will do whatever it takes to keep this dog safe and other people safe from the dog.
Okay, thank you.
I have some things here from the canine trainer. When he was on quarantine, I called Cheryl and asked her permission to take him for an evaluation. I have his temperament from the breeder and from the, I know that, I make no mistake, I knew what kind of dog I was getting. I know exactly his temperament. I know what he's capable of. I know what he does. And I've, even before I bought him, I had his training in place and things like that because I wanted to be responsible with such a big dog. So, I mean, I do, I have all of his, like, his temperament from the vet and his, the two trainers and the canine place that will take him on March third. It's like, they send him, he gets sent there for a three-week training, and they train him there.
I want to ask the young man. So, how did the dog bite the individual when you were walking him? Tell me how that occurred.
The, I was walking the dog and, out on the street, and she had come out from her car and asked if she could pet the dog. And I said no, but her hand had already been out, and the dog lunged at her hand.
Okay. All right, that's good. And so, I guess it matters what the recommendations are of the, since, because I think...
Yeah, she stipulated to the, to the facts of the bite, the bites occurred. And I think her recitation was pretty much the same as the Animal Control Officer's. So, I don't think we have any factual disputes here about what happened. We don't have any of the victims here to...
The victims, two of the victims are actually my friends. I mean, it was...
And still your friends?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Believe it or not. But I mean, the other one is a, I don't know her. She's a neighbor. She's my neighbor. I know the neighbor. It's his grown-up daughter. So, I don't really know her personally. The other two, I actually know personally.
Okay. Are there any questions for the Board of either the Animal Control Officer or the dog owner at this point?
I have letters if you guys want to see them from the canine people and the trainer.
I, I don't have any questions right now.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Well, let's get the recommendations first.
Well, I usually would do that afterwards when we deliberate, no?
Well, let's get them on the record first, and then we can...
Go ahead. Put them on the record.
Yeah.
So, I'll be honest with you. I've spent a lot of time, spent a lot of time in emotion in this specific situation. I looked at a lot of factors. It's, it's a really large dog, and it's only one years old, so it's going to get a little bit bigger. It's a male. And it's a tight-knit neighborhood, so obviously, my concern is the safety of everybody in that neighborhood. And I feel that that's also the owner's concern. As soon as I approached her on the situation, started investigating, the very first thing I noticed when I pulled up to the property is she had already posted beware of dogs signs. She had already purchased a muzzle. She had already arranged dog training. So, when I looked at all of the things that she had already proactively done and the fact that the dog was already licensed and the dog was on a leash, I felt that this was somebody that I could work with and that I could trust to be responsible because this is a, this is a very serious situation as far as this dog, what it could do. So, we really want to spend a lot of time thinking about it. So, I weighed everything when I came up with my recommendations. And I did send her a letter prior to this because I immediately wanted to take some kind of action, knowing that this dog nipped somebody and pretty much broke their hand while he was on a leash, that we didn't want to take any chances. And she was immediately on board with my suggestions. So, that reinforced my belief that if we place safety restrictions on this dog, I feel very comfortable that the dog owner will be on board and she'll comply. What I want to feel comfortable with is that her son understands the importance of not walking the dog without a muzzle, that he's only to be walked by an adult.
Yeah, he doesn't want to come at all anymore. That's all I mean.
So, we want to make sure that he's on board because it's easy when you're a kid and you're not thinking and you have a pet dog and, you know, without thinking. And I think after what happened the third time, I'm sure that he would be on board with us and understand the seriousness of the situation. So, that is the most important part that I wanted to make sure everybody was on board with. So, it would be my recommendations that the dog be humanely restrained, that the dog would be confined outdoors in a secure enclosed pen when unattended. And we've already spoke about that. And she was actually willing to get it going before the hearing, but I said, you know, let's wait until the hearing and see what we decide before you spend that money. So, she is willing to do that. That the dog only be walked by an adult on a short, strong lead and with a muzzle. I also would like to see proof of insurance coverage for the dog. We've already got three bites in a very short period of time, so it's a good idea. And that the dog owner provides some type of identification, like a microchip. So, if, God forbid, this dog ends up anywhere else, we will be able to identify him.
Okay. Questions from the Board or anything?
How big is this dog right now?
Ninety-eight pounds.
Is he neutered?
No, and he will be when, when he gets, I was going to wait two years for him to get neutered because they say that's what's best for him. But yes, he will be neutered on, after March third because I don't want him to have any open staples when he, if he can go to that training class. So, when he'll have the microchip when he goes to sleep for the, to be neutered.
Thank you.
Anything else? Can we motion to close the hearing?
Mary? Okay, Alan?
Second.
Seconded by Mary.
Roll call.
Roll call. Alan?
Yes.
P, Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Patrick, yes. Okay.
So, uh...
Why don't you bring, send, bring the recommendations up, please?
Or you can put them right in the...
Yeah, I just want to say one thing for me, okay? Three bites, no matter how they happen, is not a good situation, as you well know.
I completely agree with you.
You can't have that. So, we're going to put these stipulations in place, and you got to do whatever you can because if he came here again, that would be very bad.
He will not come here again. He will never be here again.
It would not be a good situation for you. I can tell you. Not as far as I'm concerned. Three bites, you know, I understand people reached out and did whatever, but you should have, somebody has to be there to say, "No," you know, whatever, and make sure and protect the, the people, especially from a hundred-pound dog, you know? That's, that's going, if he closes his jaw, that's a pretty good bite.
Yeah.
Right. I agree.
So, anyway, go ahead. It's sad, believe me. Nobody wants anything with dogs. I mean, I have a dog myself, and I get a little, of course, he's a golden, so he's angels. He's an angel, so...
Yeah. I've got something less than an angel myself.
He's, he's just, he wouldn't, he wouldn't, you could, you could bite him, and he wouldn't bite you.
Do you want to add neutered to the bottom part, or?
No.
That's fine. That's going to be done then.
All right. So, do you want to make the motion?
One of the recommendations, so...
Want to make a motion to approve the recommendations of...
As presented?
As presented?
As presented, sure. Second.
All right. Motion made by Mary, seconded by Alan. Is there any other discussion? What's the height of the enclosure?
Six feet. I just bought it today, actually.
It's in there. But thank you. That's good, though.
It's six feet, and it's on the bottom. There's a fence actually on the bottom, so we can... There's a fence actually on the bottom so he can't dig out and it only opens to my backyard.
And we'll probably have, I'll probably request that you put something over the top just to make sure that the dog...
Not a climber?
Yeah, especially at that size of a dog.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here and being honest and dealing with it. I appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I don't know what just happened, but thank you.
It's okay.
Okay.
Just agreeing to the list of things, you got to take care of that. Cheryl will help you out.
We'll work together.
Thank you guys very much. I really do appreciate your understanding. This has been torture and I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It'll be better for, once you implement these measures, it'll be safer for everybody and you'll be able to enjoy your dog a lot more.
I agree.
You don't have to worry as much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is a discussion of warrant articles for the special town meeting and the annual. I think the annual, is there anything to discuss on that? I don't think so, not yet.
I think we're done with that.
Right, but the, there are some to go on to the special.
All right, Article One, title, Harbor Master Service Permits Reserve for Appropriations. See if the town will vote to transfer the sum of fifteen thousand... See if the town will vote to transfer the sum of fifteen thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars from the onset, from the harbor map, harbor services permits receipts, reserve for appropriations account to be transferred to the Harbor Masters Maintenance and Improvements account or take any other action.
Can I have a motion to put it on the, on the warrant, please? Motion made by Alan, seconded by Peter. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining? Okay, it's on. What else?
This is town meeting warrant article, Community Preservation Act Fund article.
Yeah, this is the one for the, for the softball field, I believe.
See if the town will vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund or any other monies available in the Community Preservation Fund under the category of Recreation, a grant for the Wareham Girls Softball League.
How you doing?
The sum of thirty thousand dollars for more storage unit gate upgrades to the softball fields at Westfield Recreational Complex, 98 Charlotte Forest Road, Wareham.
Motion by Alan, seconded by Peter. So you guys are really improving that place a little bit and this is your second bite of the apple, which, you know, is always a good thing that you keep, keep doing it. So that's good. Is there anything you want to tell us?
State your names in the mics for the...
My name's Joseph Nuru. I'm the treasurer of the organization. I'm one of the head coaches also.
Yeah, I'm Jamie Allen. I'm the vice president of the Wareham Girls Softball League, also a coach.
We're basically just, we're looking to, you know, improve player safety and in any way that we can and, you know, improving the fields themselves with the softball-ready mix and also being able to store everything with the purchases of the storage containers because that's a pretty big expense for us every month, being a nonprofit organization. We're paying for the, the containers now as they pretty much, you know, sit there dormant as the softball season isn't going on just yet. But like I said, it's a pretty big expense, so as we make the purchase of those, we'll be saving on those every month. And those savings will probably go towards other safety measures, maybe new equipment and things like that. And also the new fence that's going to be built in on field number one will help with bringing in heavy equipment, bringing in field maintenance equipment, lawnmowers and things like that. And it'll also help with, in the event, God forbid, there's an injury on that field. The field is enclosed and the gate's pretty small, so we can't get first responders into there, any ambulance, anything like that. We actually had an accident last summer that thankfully turned out to be really well. It wasn't a really bad injury or anything, but we couldn't get anyone onto the field and we literally had our player laying at home plate while being worked on there and they had to, you know, drag the stretchers in and everything as opposed to being able to drive onto the field. So in the event that something like that happens again, obviously, we hope it doesn't, but even something as, I don't want to say miniscule, but something as, as small as a fence, just this one being wider than what we have now will definitely help with player safety.
All right, so all in favor, say aye. Opposed, abstaining, it's unanimous, so we'll put it on the warrant. And remember, you still have to get the town meeting because it'll require a vote at town meeting, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck, guys.
Nice job.
All right, so that's it for the special for those two.
Just one thing I wanted to ask the board regarding the special. Mark St. Jean out of Stone Path Malt would like to be able to, in addition to having a, you know, pouring license for the beers that, you know, his, what do you call it? Malts go into and so on and so forth and the way he operates under his current license. He'd like to also be able to sell six-packs, for example, of the beers that his clients brew. There's really no special particular provision under state law to do that, so I've talked with Representative Gifford to see if we could file a special act and put in language along the lines of notwithstanding any provision of Chapter 140 to the contrary, blah, 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 that would allow him to also sell beer from the people who use his, his product to make the beer.
Yeah, I mean, that's, it sounds logical. The only problem is you're creating a package store, as you well know. And I'm not so sure that they're going to say, yeah, go ahead, let's create that package store.
It's kind of like, it's kind of like, I don't know that I, I don't want to go quite so far as saying a package store. I think it's more an expansion of sort of what we consider the farm license.
Yeah, but as soon as you take a 12-pack of beer and sell it to somebody, that's a package store.
Yeah.
So they're going to have to make that call.
The legislature, but, but, you know, I was, I was going to ask the board if there was any, any issue with coming up with a request for special legislation to try to do this to help these people out.
Any questions over there? I see...
I'd like to ask through you. I'd like to ask through you.
Through the town attorney.
Yeah.
Could he do that as a retail, just beer and wine? Selling beer and wine with a retail license for that?
Well, you got to have, we don't have...
I'm asking the...
We don't have a license available.
Well...
For packaged goods.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Selectman Manise. Under Chapter 138, Section 12, there is a, section 15, pardon me. There is a category for beer and wine retail licenses. So theoretically, it's possible. Whether, under your existing quota, you had one, whether the zoning would be appropriate, of course, that wouldn't be for this board to determine, but it is a factor. You know, whether, you know, that was appropriate, you know, there are issues that would be out there. So theoretically, could you do it? Theoretically, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think in this instance, I'm pretty sure we gave them a premises pouring license anyway. Because if I remember correctly, we did go to the legislature to get, to get an additional pouring license for them so that they could, you know, serve out there in the first place. So this would actually, I guess it would be an amendment of the prior legislation to allow them to also sell, you know, packaged goods.
It'll be a little tricky because one of the things that they are pretty sticklers about is that places that pour can't sell specifically, can't sell. Matter of fact, they even bring bottles in that are different on purpose so that they can't sell them. You know what I mean? It's a real kind of a sticky place. We could ask the legislature. They're the ones who have to make that call.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chairman, when the legislature was in the process of adjusting to the repeal of prohibition, it did look at the question of allowing on-premises consumption establishments to sell over the counter, if you will, in some other countries. The United Kingdom, for example, you can buy alcoholic beverages at the bar and carry them off the premises under certain conditions. That typically has not been the Massachusetts rule. You know, maybe in one of the agricultural categories, maybe they've come up with something there. So I certainly think that if the applicant hasn't done a thorough perusal of the agricultural exemptions that are available under the Liquor Control Act, that maybe they ought to put their lawyer the task before you go to the legislature. And then if their counsel doesn't see something that would fit whatever it is they're trying to do, then...
It gets a little sticky as far as trying to get the, get it under the farmer thing because the, the farmer, of course, is the one who produces the alcohol. These guys don't actually produce the alcohol. They produce an ingredient that goes into the alcohol. So that's kind of where they, they fall through sort of the cracks here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's true. Alan?
I know that on bars and stuff like that, it's, you can't sell stuff over the counter per se.
Oh, yeah. It's been a no-no for years.
Can't even carry it off.
No, you can't do anything. But the bottom line is that it might save us a lot of time. Why don't we reach out to Ralph Sacimone, who's the director of the Alcoholic Beverage Commission? We have his phone that we can call anytime we want. If you want, I can make a call tomorrow and ask him, here's what we got, you know, what do you recommend?
We can actually, I can have Cassandra make that call and ask.
Whatever you want. I just, I deal with Ralph a lot, so...
I'll have her make that call.
It's fine.
And talk to him. Because she has, she's been talking to him lately, so it should work out. We'll ask, ask the question. See if we go anywhere. If he says, well, if the legislature lets you, then fine, then we'll, we'll think about doing something like that.
Yeah.
All right? Okay.
Yeah, he'll give you a straight answer.
Next up, any other business not reasonably anticipated last 48 hours? No. Town administrators report, we don't have one, right?
How do you know?
Because she, she told me earlier.
You might have sent her with the big one.
We've got a designee.
Liaison reports, Mr. Manise. No, no. Go ahead, Alan.
Yikes.
Oh, Jim can go.
He can go first.
Let's see. You know, I had a few key...
Go ahead, Jim.
Well, as I said earlier, when we were talking...
You do, really? Do you?
We, CMW voted to approve a restated amended agreement, which will be coming up probably in the special town meeting. I will send you, I sent it to Attorney Bowen. I'll send you the copies and so we'll need to get moving on that, get on the special town meeting. And also, we had a meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust last week and we're moving along nicely. It's a good group and it's kind of fun and we're moving forward.
Need to help gin it up applicants?
Which?
To spend your money?
No, no. We, we made a decision to, to have a general program and up to fifty thousand dollars for residents from the town of Wareham, I believe, to assist them in a first and or last month's rent if they meet certain guidelines, qualified, qualified guidelines. We're still kind of working through that, but we, we're making some progress, you know, to offer some programs through the Housing Trust to help people out.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, Alan, you're up. I got to go to the bathroom.
You timed that just right.
You go ahead and do your thing.
Something can't wait.
You go wait for five minutes, we find...
There may be leaves and lights above the bathroom.
Let's see, today we have put on file the fiscal year 2021 to 2025 tip, which is transportation improvement recommendations for Southeast Mass. Wareham has the bike path, which is scheduled for 2024 at five million, three hundred thirteen thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Is this the one, Alan, that's going to go down minded half presumably?
Yes, sir.
And it's not going to be, it's not going to be narrower lanes, correct?
No.
That's good because otherwise I was going to nickname it Death Alley.
No, it's going to have separate sidewalks, et cetera. And the other piece, which I mentioned earlier, which is nice to see, although it's not scheduled per se, in the supplemental list, is the Wareham Corridor Improvements on Route 6 at Swift Beach Road, which Mass DOT has taken up as a separate project at approximately three million, two hundred forty-eight thousand, seven hundred four dollars. So doing a traffic light is not a simple thing these days. So we can put that on file.
Is that just for the traffic light?
That's for the traffic light, it's a section change. It's not only the traffic light, you also have to...
Reconfigure.
Reconfigure the roads.
Yikes.
Well then...
So if we want to do the one on Tahonet Road and Route 28, you have the same kind of situation. That's why the town could definitely not afford that on its own.
No.
Do they consider them?
Oh, it's, it's in the list.
One of them.
Yeah. Okay. Next, we have the actual Route 6 corridor study, which the draft is, just came out today in my meeting. We'll put that there, it'll be in the Selectman's Office, anyone wants to read it. People can make comments on it. Basically, we had four choices as far as whether it be a four-lane road continued or a two-lane with a third lane turn. Majority of the responses that were given was for the four-lane with a bike path, you know, with the sidewalks. The next one up, of course, would be the three with a turning lane. And they list, I think, there's seven or eight different intersections. It's interesting, the intersections from Fairhaven to here are rated A through F. Well, Swift Beach is F, it's the only one. So that's why we're on a priority list. Everyone else is like B or C, but we're right up there at number one. I also started to have discussions on the community center, which I've been pushing for years now. And basically, DHCD can help fund that as well as EDA grant and of course, the H-Friendly Communities Project, which has grant programs as well. So I'm starting to put pieces together, hopefully with something down the line. We've got some property that just came up on minded half that might be possible. And of course, if we do anything over at the Deacon School, there might be a possibility there. So I'm working on that. I also attended the meeting this past week over at the Glen Cove on the Host Track and Casino. It was interesting that there was, I'd say probably about a hundred seniors mostly, and they did a very nice presentation on the facility, et cetera. It was well received. Today, this morning, I was over at the, of all places, Dunkin' Donuts in West Wareham. There's a small veterans group that meets every couple of weeks there. Representative Keating's aide was there.